Good evening, I'd like to call this August 25th, 2014 Board of Education meeting for the Forest Hills School Board to order. Mr. Tepfer, if you please take role.
Mrs. Bissinger. Dr. Heiss.
Here.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Frum.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
...............................................................
The safety exits, we have one here, one all the way in the back, and then the two to my left, to your right, here in the front of the building. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepfer.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Frum.
Yes. Item three, approval of minutes, 3.1, approval of the special meeting of July 14th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepfer.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Yes.
Mr. Frum.
Yes. 3.2, approval of the meeting of July 21st, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepfer.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Yes.
Mr. Frum.
Yes. And correspondence, Dr. Jackson.
Yes, Board of Education, and what I, I'd like a couple things to kind of give quick updates and correspondence. The first correspondence, I'd just like to share with you, the Cincy Magazine came out, the latest issue, the September issue, and it actually shares that both Anderson and Turpin were named in the top 10 best high schools in southwest Ohio, and a great article about that, and the criteria in the magazine, so we're very pleased with that. So congratulations to both our fine high schools. Another piece of correspondence that I just received, although the news is little, but it changes all the time, so I thought I'd just give a quick update. House Bill 487, which was recently established as the requirements for high school, earning a high school diploma, the new requirements. Just to share a couple key points from this piece of legislation, is this will be the last year that the 10th grade Ohio graduation test will be given. Beginning with this year's freshman class, they will have new requirements for graduation, of which a number of courses that they need to take, but as well as end-of-the-course examinations. There will be at least seven end-of-the-course examinations for the students, and they will need to score a certain number of points on those, and those point total added together to, which we don't know what the point total is yet, but with that, I just want to say, and then I feel sad for our sophomores this year, it's going to be a very busy year for them, because not only do they have to take the OGTs, but they will also have to take these pretty high-stake end-of-the-course tests beginning this year as well. So I wanted to share that, that we did get some more information from that, and I want to thank our curriculum department, especially Natasha and Brad for keeping me informed and staying on top of all these things, and again, it's always a moving target, and Brad and I had a meeting today to talk about these changes and how we're going to address these. So, thank you. Moving on, I'd like to put a plug in for our Head Start program. We have a Head Start program that will be this year up and running at Mercer Elementary. We are in the process of enrolling preschoolers in that program, so any preschoolers, please come to our central office here, particular qualifications, and go online for the qualifications. Am I right, Betsy? Thank you. Scott, you like to mess that up?
Contact information is online.
Thank you. All right. So all contact and requirements are online that they can take a look at. And the, last year was the first year that a small group of schools in southwest Ohio did the quality profile. And our Forest Hills quality profile is another way of communicating with our community, the great school systems that we have, that we go far beyond what some of the state requirements share, and I am pleased to say that our quality profile will be coming out here in early September. Actually, the release date is September 15th. And the reason I bring that is because that quality profile has caught on across the state, and there are literally dozens and dozens and dozens of schools, all the way from the Cleveland area to, again, the Ohio River, that will be providing to their communities the same document, the quality profile, with their data in there, so we're really pleased with that. So I believe that's our updates for this month, other than the fact that this is the second week of school already. We had three days of school with our students last week, and this is our fourth day today. Thank you.
Mr. Tepfer.
No.
As many of you know, this is not a public meeting, but it's a meeting held in public. We nevertheless welcome your comments. If any of you care to address the board, please fill out a green card at the front of the room, and we will address you at the appropriate time during the meeting. And always the most wonderful time of all of our meetings, we have a candidate for graduation, Mr. Broadwater.
Good evening. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce the following student, who has completed all requirements for a diploma from Anderson High School, and that is Jordan Jeffrey Williams. Jordan, Jordan has informed me he is moving on to the Marine Corps after this, and so we congratulate him on that, and we thank him for his service to our country. So I recommend a motion to approve the granting of a high school diploma to Jordan Williams.
I move that we grant a diploma to Jordan Williams.
Second.
Mr. Tepfer.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Frum.
Yes. Congratulations.
Just, you know, occasionally, we do have a graduate that comes through, and just want to thank both of our high schools and our entire program here at Forest Hills for helping these students. Jordan was just a couple credits short. We were able to provide some alternative opportunities for him to get those credits, and just was just this close to graduating with the class, but here we are just a few weeks later, and so it's really exciting to see that, so, thank you.
Do we have any green cards? No, anybody? Thank you. Item 7.1, district updates, facilities updates, Dr. Jackson.
Yeah, I'd like to give a quick update regarding where we are with our facilities. First of all, there's a couple things that are occurring as we speak, actually. I've asked all of our building principals to begin setting some committee groups in their buildings, to, as I said in our opening day address, to take our planning stages from the 10,000-foot level to like the 5,000-foot level. We know primarily what our facilities are going to cost us to upgrade and to renovate and to new. Now it's just kind of looking at, okay, what's the next step? And that's to prepare of what does those classrooms look like? We know the cost, pretty much, but what are they going to look like? And how are we going, are there things that we've not necessarily gotten into, some of the minor details that will begin to do that? The second thing that will be going out, probably at the end of this week, if not the very first part of next week, is going to be a survey to all of our staff. And that survey will entail some of the same types of questions. I have just a couple of them here, but basically, it's how do we, as teachers and educators and administrators and others in our district, how do we, what's our vision for the Forest Hills and learning, and how does that all transpire, transpire, transfer back into facilities? And making this the very best place for students and our staff? So that's kind of our quick facilities update. We have a bond issue committee that's been up and going and meeting, and they're doing some great work in beginning to spread the message of our facilities efforts in the community.
Thank you. Curriculum update. Ms. Adams.
You guys have this handout at your place. We are working this year on answering two guiding questions, and one is kind of related to what Dr. Jackson was just speaking of. What is the future vision of innovative learning in Forest Hills? Although we've been very progressive in the use of technology, and we've always had the vision of success for all students, we haven't really taken the time to sit down and really define what that means for now and for the future, because of all of the changes. And so, we started that work last year as an administrative team, now we're going to expand that work out to other stakeholders, including the teachers, students, and parents, so that we can put in writing some of that definition and how we see the future of learning kind of playing out in Forest Hills. So that will be a big part of our year. And then the second thing is a question that's meant to help students develop and own their own learning, with higher standards that are coming through, through Ohio's new learning standards, and with the assessments that are coming. We really want it to work to empower the students, to really, to know what the learning is, to be all about, know what the direction is, and being able to kind of measure themselves along the way. And sometimes, students can take a passive role, and we want to shift that, so they're taking a much more active role. To do this, it's going to take a lot of collaboration, and we worked diligently last year and have started this year in developing collaborative structures inside of our district. The district leadership team, we have building leadership teams, and teacher-based teams that are working together to define what we need to teach, how we need to change and deliver instruction differently, what that means for how students are evaluated and how they're measured, as well as how teachers are measured, because all those things are kind of changing. And we know that we won't figure this out sitting in our offices or staying in our silos in our own buildings, that it really takes a full-on district collaborative effort, and so that's what we're committed to doing. So to go a little bit deeper, we'll go to the second page. We'll be following an instructional design process, and we've followed this over the last couple years and have gotten English Language Arts well underway. And what we'll be doing is implementing our literacy framework, so this is strategic decisions that we've made about how we want English Language Arts to be delivered in our school district. And the key implementation feature this year will be the writing process, and so that will be something emphasized from handwriting in the very lower grades, all the way up into crafting essays and different kinds of writing to the seniors. And so that will be a concerted district effort. Additionally, we're going to be working on the math course of study this school year. It's time to evaluate the courses that we offer, the path in which we lay out for them, and as you know, we chose the integrated path, and so we want to make sure that that's cohesive, K-12 in our instruction and our delivery. We'll be working on mathematical practices that go along with it, in terms of the shifts of instruction that have to take place, and it'll give us a chance to look at our gifted program. We want to zero in on what's working well and what areas can we improve, because that's the area where we serve directly. We're going to be in probably year four or five, technically, it might be a little bit longer, of the RTI implementation, which is the Response to Intervention, which details our multiple tiers of instruction and intervention that we're able to offer our students. And as we're focusing on reading and writing and math, we'll continue to improve and expand our interventions and enrichments that we can offer students, to give them the support that they need when they need it in each of our buildings. And we're working really hard to make sure that this is happening across the district in the same manner, with the same fidelity. As you know, we're expanding our digital learning opportunities, also that will be a focus this year, as we're being able to provide more technology in the elementary grades three through six on a day-to-day basis, and we're continuing to expand in seven through 12, so that we can offer more authentic learning opportunities for our students. And finally, and this is going to be a big part, and this is back to the moving target Dr. Jackson is speaking of, in the use of data, and the use of new assessments, and the use of creating assessments, taking new kinds of assessments, online assessments, there's a whole litany of things that we're going to be taking on as a school system this year, to understand how the state is going to measure the success of our students. And so we've learned a lot, we keep paying attention to changes and things that are underway, and we'll be bringing our staff along and offering practice for our students, so that they are best prepared for the next generation assessments that are coming our way in the spring. And finally, just to wrap up, we are going to, I'm going to read this line, this is something that's, it's really important to us to emphasize throughout our organization, and that is developing a growth mindset. "Students who embrace growth mindsets, which is the belief that they can learn more or become smarter if they work hard and persevere, may learn more, learn it more quickly, and view challenges and failures as opportunities to improve their learning and skills." And that is something, in this age of assessment, in this age of ranking and ordering and looking at, being kind of obsessed with data, we want to make sure that we are setting measurable goals for students, that we're doing a balanced approach, students feel good about themselves, and that they can continue to dream big and not be defined by some of these data points that are coming, and that we really are focusing on the whole child and instilling that kind of belief in each person as we bring these new changes to our curriculum. So that's just a brief overview. We'll be coming back next month to kind of give you a data picture of where we are in the district and talk more specifically about our quality profile. So, are there any questions?
We've got a bill in Columbus, and possibly some changes coming, we just don't know yet.
Yes.
How will that impact what you're doing?
It'll impact us greatly, from one, just like the state of mind, like your mental state, of we're gearing up to do these, get these changes going, and then it just to change on a dime is very unsettling to us. In terms of our practice, we've been very strategic in anything we're doing with English Language Arts or math, to be about the instruction that we want to see happen in Forest Hills. So I wouldn't say that all of our work is going to be thrown out the door, I also wouldn't say that it's not going to affect us at all. We're trying to just make the best decisions about what should be happening in our classrooms, what is best for students, and we try to stay on that path, stay as close to the line of following the requirements as possible, but doing what we believe is important in Forest Hills. And so, all of the professional development we have planned this year will be carried out, and we'll make classrooms better, we'll make teachers better, no matter what happens in the legislature. But it is, I mean, we pay attention to it every day, we're getting updates, and it's very unsettling, and to not know, you know, we always, we plan with the end in mind, that's kind of our focus. We're always kind of shooting for, what is that end product, where do we want to see things? And when you don't really know the end, the end keeps changing, it makes all the steps in between, like you can wear yourself out, wondering if you're doing the right steps or the wrong steps, and so it's an energy suck, really, in many, many ways.
Since you mentioned design process, I want to applaud the effort that you're putting into this, because using something like a design process where you've got the outcome in mind before you begin, and you set up the process to deliver the outcome, that's best practice work, that's like MBA training, and that's, you get the most efficient response that way. It's more work, but I said, it's the right thing to do, and I'm really pleased to see that that's what's happening in our school district.
Well, and I do want to applaud the teachers, because that's probably been true in our district for a long time, where teachers individually are planning with the end in mind, and now we're asking teachers to kind of come together as an organization, as a group of teachers. So it allows us to kind of maximize the strengths of this district, but it does make the, it makes it more complicated sometimes. But what we feel is that it might be a slower process, but we get a much better product by pulling all the strengths of our teachers and getting their input, and not just making decisions at a central office level, that they're deeply involved in this process, and so we're proud of that. Anything else?
Other questions? Thank you so very much, Natasha.
Thanks.
Item 8.1, board discussion. Well, I have one item. Many of you are, well, gosh, not just many, I can't imagine not all of you aren't familiar with the ALS Challenge. I will tell you, I am not particularly adept at social media, and I actually wish I didn't have a Facebook page right now. Dr. Forrest Heiss did the board the great pleasure of challenging the board as a whole, as he had water dumped over his head by his children, and I think his dog, too. And rumor has it that Natasha Adams did the board the great pleasure of challenging us, although I have yet to see that. And somebody told me Ms. Peggy Johnson also did the same.
Yeah, he knows her wife. [laughing] I made sure you got the message.
Which is, always the best way to get to me is through my wife. So, I have not had water poured over my head yet. Tony, knowing that we were coming here this morning, and knowing that it was going to be an item of discussion, sent us the video of his getting dumped before he came here. Now, I actually haven't seen that either, because I can't figure out how to open it, but he tells me that's what it is. What I have is my check, and I downloaded the form and filled it out, because I don't even know how to donate online. I have the envelope, and I have the stamp. Three challenges, $300. So that'll be going in. Now, more challenges does not necessarily mean more dollars. And I'm fortunate that this isn't live, because I'll make a suggestion, if anybody cares to dump water on my head after the meeting tonight, after executive session, I think it'll be about 1:00 AM before we get out of here.
At least.
I'm more than happy to have that water dumped on my head, as long as I get the opportunity to set my iPad aside, so it doesn't get run. So just be here at 1:00 when we're finished, and you can do that. And then for the rest of the board, I know Tony did his part, and I know Forrest started this whole process. So Randy, Julie?
[laughing] She's found out about it.
I think you have 24 hours, that's the way I understand it.
I'm game.
Other board discussion?
I'd say we may have some ice here, actually.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. No other board discussion, item 9.1, foreign exchange student. Ms. Ryan?
The administration of Anderson High School is requesting board approval for Benedetta Sardini, a foreign exchange student for the school year 2014-15. Benedetta is from Italy, she'll be a student at Anderson High School. IUSA International Exchange is sponsoring her, and all information has been received and reviewed for her. The superintendent is recommending the board approve the enrollment of Benedetta Sardini at Anderson High School, and authorize the waiver of instructional and school fees for her.
We're doing items 9.1 through 13.2 as consent agenda items. Thank you. Item 10.1, supplemental books. Ms. Adams?
The superintendent recommends that the board approve the supplemental book for grades 10 through 11, History. It's the destiny of the republic, and as our practice, it will be on review in central office until August 25th, or, sorry. It'll start being on review, so it can be voted on for the next board meeting. One thing I want to point out is that you're going to start seeing more and more texts as that I keep bringing forward, because the standards not only apply for English Language Arts to the English Language Arts teachers, but also to science and social studies. So as teachers are finding great resources, they're bringing more and more forward, so this will be a continued practice.
We also have a 10.1, for the love and relationship.
Oh, I don't have that on my paper. When we were all, paper copies. Secret Life of Bees and Lonely Bones. Sorry, must have an old version. Yes, okay, this is the motion to approve the supplemental books for grades 12, Love and Relationship. We presented this last month, and it's been on review. It's The Secret Life of Bees and The Lonely Bones. So we recommend that you approve these supplemental books for grade 12.
Great, thank you.
Sorry about that, thank you.
The Human Resources Report?
Well, sorry. The Human Resources Bulletin.
Yeah, Bulletin. We all have updated copies of this.
And it's also online, the correct version, so. Item 11.1, item A would be retirement. Item B, we see resignation of administrators, teaching staff, and non-teaching staff. Item C, we do have one leave of absence. Item D is an unpaid leave of absence. Item E is a bus monitor salary schedule for the 1415 through 1617 school year, and you do have an exhibit for that. Item F is a job description for the administrative assistant to the superintendent, that's also an exhibit. Item G is a change of salary from 1314, so this is a corrective action from an inappropriate placement on the salary schedule last year. Item H, a change of salary for 1415. Item I, these are changes of assignment, and this occurs rather regularly each year, as people are moved, shifted, in order to meet the needs of our students. Item J and K, appointments, and we have a number of appointments. You had the opportunity this evening to meet many of those, many of our new staff, administrators, certified staff. We also have classified staff on here. It goes through page five. Moving on to item L, these are special services appointments, and this is for extended school year for the summer of 2014. Item M, special services appointments for the 1415 school year. And again, this is a couple of pages. We go to item N at the top of page eight, and these are the appointments of our coaches and advisors. This is also an exhibit, and you see a number of, there's maybe three pages, of coaches and advisors. We're very fortunate that our folks, our teachers and our staff love to be coaches and advisors, and make those great relationships and connections with kids. Item O, we see substitute personnel. Item P, a memorandum of understanding with our Forest Hills Teachers Association, and there are a couple of items on here, but I do want to bring attention to the supplemental salary schedule. We started working on this back in the winter, took a look at many, many, many districts in the Cincinnati area, really kind of narrowed it down to looking at our peer districts in the ECC. Those tended to be the districts that were most similar to us, and we tried to make sure that the supplemental salary schedule was very competitive, and also driven by the needs of our kids. So what our building principals, what our teachers were telling us, these are the things that kids want to be a part of, and so, you know, obviously, that's very important. This is the first time this has been done in a really long time. So, I mean, there are some folks here who've worked really hard on it. Rick was a part of that, John Vandermeer, I'm not sure, Mike Broadwater, oh, there's John back there, and a lot of folks, and then our Teachers Association, really have to thank them for this, being so collaborative and working with us. So we think this is a great, a great thing for our teachers, and more importantly, for our kids. Item Q is an MOU with our OPEC 177 and 273 groups, and they're, again, this is an exhibit item, and again, this resolved two or three issues that really were for the benefit of both their organization as well as our organization, so we want a shout-out to them, too, and say thanks for their collaboration and work. And the staff FTE for the 1415 school year at this time stands at 777.84, and that does represent the change from the 1314 school year to the 1415 school year, with the exception of bus drivers. We're still working out to make sure that, you know, where we are with our bus drivers. Several of those were just hired, you know, very recently, and we just want to make sure we give you accurate information. So the superintendent recommends board approval for item 11.1.
Thank you, Ms. Carnan. Item 12.1, the authorization to issuance of requests for qualifications, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, before you use a motion to allow me to take all the necessary steps for the issuance of requests for qualifications for professional design services for the construction of New Wilson, and the building renovations related to the passage of the November 4th bond issue. So the treasurer recommends the board approve the request, to issue the request for qualifications.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Item 12.2, the bus stops, Mr. Johnson?
It's one of our favorite things to do every year. The treasurer recommends the board approve the bus stops, as well as the authority to designate or relocate subsequent school bus stops, be delegated by the board to the superintendent or designate, and a list of the recommended bus stops for the 2014-15 school year is attached.
Is there a place we can pick up the packet of them?
Yes. And we've actually reduced it down to about nine pages, front and back.
Front and back, very nice.
Yeah. It's a legacy thing, so, yeah.
I hear you.
All right. Item 12.3, transportation agreement with Marymount City Schools?
We've worked out a great relationship with Marymount Schools. The treasurer recommends the board approve the agreement with Marymount City School District to provide shuttle services for the Forest Hills School District students attending Scarlet Oaks Joint Vocational Center in Sharonville for the 2014-15 school year. And what I might add is, our drivers take students, our students to Marymount, they board a bus there, where there's also, I believe, Indian Hill students board the bus, and they take bus, and they take one bus up to Sharonville. So it causes a little bit less time on the bus for our kids and it's a straight shot there for them. So otherwise, they're going to Milford and picking up a shuttle there and having to get there quite a bit earlier.
Thank you. And then item 13.1, the meter investment management agreement. Mr. Tepfer?
Yeah, we've been researching possible partnerships for investment management for quite a while. Found the folks at Meter to be really meeting all of our strategic plans with regard to investments. It's a company out of Columbus, it's had a lot of success there and wanting to get in this market. So obviously, we were able to get great rates for their services. Obviously, and I've contacted some of the schools there, Dublin, Hilliard, Arlington, Shaker Heights, Mentor, a lot of great results there over the last few years. So we felt comfortable moving forward with them. We put together a kind of a business plan over the next three to five years, which is where, I'll steal what Natasha said earlier, looking for growth mindset. So it can only go up from where we are, but obviously, that's where the growth is in that three to five years, that's where the yield curve is, and that's where we believe we'll be able to increase our earnings. I believe the fees that we pay will come back several times in interest earnings. And obviously, we'll report that as it happens. So recommending the board approve the meter investment management agreement, and that is shown in the agenda. We have had legal look at that and a couple of changes were made to clean up language to make it comfortable for us. Item 13.2, 13.2A, our donations for the month of July, statement of board accounts. We have three accounts that are waiting for some funds to come our way. C, D, and E show our receipts and expenditures. It's early in the year, so it's hard to look at those numbers and gain much, but we are tracking those as we go on a month-by-month basis. I do plan with those in mind to bring a revised five-year forecast in September, latest October, to kind of pull everything together that we've done so far. I think we'll be able to, at that point, be able to then formally hook up with Meter and do our cash flow forecasting from that. But it's positive, obviously, after the way we ended the year last year. And item F, we have the bank reconciliation. G, our investment, list of investments. And H, no change in our general fund appropriations, but we have a large increase as we received notice of the auxiliary services, federal program funding levels were communicated. So that's what the increase in those appropriations are. Item I, our board service fund expenses. Item J, our transfer. This is usually just the transfer of FY14 to FY15 auxiliary services, but we do have a transfer to fund the self-insured workers' comp fund that we do on an as-needed basis. It's time to make that transfer, so that's what also included in item J. And item K, we have a list of the appointment of the cashiers for those that handle district funds planned throughout the year. It is recommended the board approve all items presented by our whole team, 9.1 to 13.2 as presented.
Second, discussion?
I have a question on the proposal for Wilson and the other buildings. Once they come in, what process do you have in place or do you hire in place yet?
Now, there's a very detailed format as far as where we go. It's pretty easy to reduce the number. I think last time, four, five years when we went through this, we received like 20. It's pretty easy to get down to seven or eight. Last time we received 10 or 11, and it got down to five or six pretty easily. What the hope is, is that the September board meeting will come back with a list of three. Not allowed to talk money, fees, or anything, but we'll go through a screening process with Dr. Jackson, get down to three, bring them back, write them to the board. After that, then, you know, we're allowed to start negotiating with number one, Ryan. We don't reach an agreement with number two, number three. But there's a formalized application that the ad will be in the paper tomorrow, it'll be on the website tomorrow, and those that are interested can request further details.
Okay. Who will be involved in the actual screening process? Do you have a committee or how's that going to work?
I think at least the three of us, and we're going to improve that, increase that as we go, but at least the three of us plus others.
Okay, thank you.
I had asked some of the same questions and Ray sent me the two documents you're looking at there.
It's very detailed, Ray.
It's actually all.
Nothing less.
It's pretty laid out by the higher vice director.
Yes.
And all the firms are used, these are the same types of questions that they get from most, which we've worked with several others to formulate this over the years.
Thank you.
Other discussion questions? A motion to approve the consent agenda, items 9.1, 13.2?
Just a minute.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Tepfer?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgaard?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frumey?
Yes. Item 14.1, business advisory committee?
We have not had a meeting since the last board meeting, but we do have one scheduled for Monday, September 8th, 7:00 here. Welcome to attend. We're going to be talking about our health insurance renewal will be hopefully received on Friday, so we'll get some information there, investment management, and obviously talking about next steps with facilities and so forth. So those are kind of the general topics.
14.2 is the Forest Hills Foundation report. The major issues in the foundation is destination imagination mini camp at Nagel on September 6th for parents and students interested in finding out more about destination imagination. So show up for that on September 6th. The ACT prep class is September 6th for current seniors. And the distinguished alumni award luncheon is scheduled for Friday, October 10th. This year's honorees are Mike Brandy of Anderson High School in 1974, Pete Deloise, a Turpin High School graduate in 1978, Stephanie Cohen-Lang, Turpin High School in 1987, Michael Kraecaff Turpin High School, 1990. Also being honored is Mike Hall, of course, the Anderson principal from 1985 to 2003. And this year, the distinguished service award will go to Jeannie Miller for her dedication to the Anderson Alumni Association. So really, a great group of honorees, and I would encourage everybody to attend the luncheon on Friday, October 10th. Then the finally-named big event, the soiree for success, will be Saturday, November 15th, at the home of Joe and Lorraine Marinick. I understand that place is absolutely amazing, and it is limited to the first 300 people. So registration will open soon. More to come on that, but if you want to go, you'll need to register promptly.
And it's been waiting for this for a long time.
Long time.
The soiree.
The gala had been used in the past, but this is better.
It's not a gala. It's a soiree.
Yeah.
14.3, legislative liaison. Randy?
House Bill 47 was passed in June, and it contained a lot of changes for public education. Dr. Jackson referenced one of them earlier this evening. That has been eclipsed in its attention by House Bill 597, which is legislation that would eliminate and prohibit Ohio's use of the Common Core standards. The committee that is taking testimony right now is the House Rules Committee, not the Education Committee. That's a signal that this is being fast-tracked. What 597 would do is eliminate or prohibit the use of CCSS after the current school year. I want to make sure, there you, I want to make sure you're not falling out of your chair when, of course, I know you already know most of this stuff. Eliminates or prohibits the use of Ohio standards for science and social studies, which, by the way, are not part of the Common Core, which I think is kind of interesting. Prohibits the use of park assessments. Is it after this year or ever?
I think ever.
Yeah, okay. Puts in place the Massachusetts standards for math, English Language Arts, Science, and Social Studies for two years. That's 2015, 16, and 1617. New Ohio standards in the four subject areas to be developed by the State Board of Education for use beginning with 2017/18. This means that today's, and I think you might have mentioned this earlier, that today's freshmen would face three different sets of standards for math, English, science, and social studies during their four years of high school. It does some other things I'm not going to go into, but, I mean, I am not a fan of anything where the federal government has control of anything that's local. But on the other hand, pulling out the rug out from underneath schools at this point is just unfair. By some very rough estimates, including soft and hard costs, our district may have invested somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars. And, again, soft and hard costs, and to getting to the, taking the standards and moving them into our curriculum, which has been underway for a number of years. And to, like I say, pull the rug out from underneath us is not fair. If they're going to do this, fine, but they need to come up with a different bill that implements this in a different way and compensates school districts for the work that we've invested. I say "we," that our district has invested in this so far. And if any of the board members have got any comments on this, I'd be very interested to hear it. I did get a call from the OSBA Legislative Group asking me to come and testify Wednesday on what this will, the impact of this bill to our school district. And if there's alignment to this, I would be willing to do that. If we're not in line, or I've already spoken with Dr. Jackson, and actually, Rick, I haven't had a chance to talk with you yet.
If you testified, would you focus on the financial, would that be your primary focus as the financial?
Absolutely, because that's, it's the impact of what their bill is, as opposed to, you know, the actual standards themselves.
I was going to say, the best thing I heard tonight, then, was Natasha talking about our teachers trying to develop something that works for our kids in our district. If these freshmen might face three different sets of standards, I think that's what we're going to need to focus on and do what we know to be best, and I think we're going to cover it all.
Well, I just want to share.
You know, and all your points there, one thing that, and I've brought this up with other people, too, is there's no funding mechanism. Shock. You know, this is a great plan, we have this great idea, there's no funding mechanism with the Common Core coming in. So this is a, you know, this is a classic gigantic unfunded mandate, on top of the fact that having freshmen undergo three different standards and, you know, we've seen with, the teachers have done an incredible job getting this, getting their arms around and making it as much local as they can, I mean, getting it for our kids. To change that again, and then potentially change it again, you know, I don't, you know, the money's easy, is the easiest thing, I, no, to rally against, to say, wait a minute, okay, if you have this great idea, put it in your bill, this is how we're going to fund it. We are going to, you know, we're going to give $2 million for every district so that they can institute this. Okay, and that's not there.
Regardless of what the standard is, though, it's going to be an unfunded mandate. The frustrating thing that I'm hearing is that it's a, we've gone so far down this path, and we're going to have to pull back potentially.
It'll be interesting. It'll be interesting. I mean, Indiana is one of the states that did away with the Common Core, but the standards they have are exactly the Common Core.
Right.
So, you know, so it's something that gets in the paper that, oh, we have a, we dumped the Common Core, but then they go and they made the Indiana standards, which happened to, you know, so that eased the transition.
But that's not what this does.
No.
And that's problematic. I mean, this isn't about, in my opinion, whether you're for or against the Common Core. This is about just trying to provide some stability and continuity, something that we can count on, and we don't have it. And it keeps changing the, moving the cheese, right? And it's, I mean, we just can't plan, and worse, it's just destroying the kids. I'm in favor of what you're proposing, at least as far as your testimony, although I don't know that you need any of our approval. You speak for yourself in any event.
Well, I think you summarized it very well. It's not about the Common Core, it's about what they're doing to us. That's the problem. But, thank you.
All right, thank you. Good report. There is no Saga report because Saga didn't have a meeting next month. I don't remember when the next meeting is, but I know we always get an email, and I'm sure we will. Julie, executive session?
Yes, pursuant to Riley's request, section 121.22, G1, I hereby move that the board adjourn the executive session for the purposes of considering the employment of a public employee or official.
Second, Mr. Tepfer?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgaard?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frumey?
Yes, our next regular board meeting is September 22nd, 2014, here at 7:00 PM. I'll see some of you at 1:00 in the morning. Thank you for coming.